Should we wait for Carly?
Yeah, I think she'll just be a second. She was just changing.
Okay. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming together for this special city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 30th, and it is 4:01 PM. We're coming together for the special meeting for two agenda items. One is a Walnut Lane update. Two is proposed ordinance 2021-13. And that is the ordinance that we discussed at our last city council meeting. We gave direction to staff to come back to us with a revision of the document for our vote for today. And without further ado, Caitlin, our special projects, special ops manager, thanks for coming to give us this Walnut Lane update.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I only get situated.
And Summer, are we all good with audiovisual items of all kinds?
I believe so.
Okay.
Find out.
Is everybody, is everybody good?
Okay. Thank you for having me. Thanks to Joel. Last week at the council meeting, I was out of town. So I appreciate him scheduling this meeting and us being able to talk about this. I wish that I could have just called in, but I think it's better that we have this conversation in person. So this is a Walnut Lane update. So we'll start with general project updates. It's been a few months since we, I've met with you as a council to talk through what's been going on at Walnut Lane. So just general overview of where we're at. On April 22nd, the planning commission approved the Walnut Lane preliminary pad site plan. So we officially are vested project with a site plan. After that, you know, kind of in conjunction of us working on the preliminary site plan, the city also contracted with SET and DHM, who were working on the master plan to do final site plan documents for Phase One's final plan. So after we got our preliminary plan approval, architectural square team, who was working on our master planning services, kind of worked on wrapping up most of those, you know, final documents. And most of our final site plan documents for Phase One were complete so that we would have been able to just kind of walk forward and bring you guys a site, a final site plan for Phase One. On May 21st, so about a month after, we got the preliminary site plan passed, IndyDwell submitted building plans, so those have been officially received in our office. And kind of through the months of May and into June, we had been talking with IndyDwell for a while about bonding. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But officially on June 16th, IndyDwell notified us, Carly and myself, that they could not meet the performance bond requirements in our contract. So we tried to bring this to you as quickly as we could. It was just kind of poor timing of me being out of town. So this was just the soonest that we could schedule a meeting to talk about it. So this meeting is kind of just to talk through some of the issues that we've been having with IndyDwell in order to establish a way to continue moving forward with this project. So a few items that I want to highlight that we've been kind of working on these past six months with IndyDwell are obviously the performance bond requirements. IndyDwell has also expressed to us that the agreement sum of our contract, or the not to exceed amount that you guys approved, is now cost prohibitive because of price surges in construction, because of COVID. And, you know, also because of COVID and because of the craziness of this year, we've also had delays in schedule. So, you know, talking about the big one first, I think most of you are aware. I think everyone is kind of aware generally of how much COVID and the pandemic has affected supply chain and the housing industry. Lumber has gone up over 400% since this time last year because of the pandemic. We are just now starting to see within the last couple of weeks lumber is starting to come back down. Steel is continuing to rise because of supply chain things in China. And so, you know, it's, it's just a big supply chain housing crisis right now because of COVID. And so IndyDwell, like any other builder right now, is not exempt from that. And so they have communicated to us that they need approximately $300,000 to $400,000 in like, on top of our agreed agreement sum, just due to COVID price surges. So they've communicated to us, the performance bond has been an issue for longer, but the, the price surges and the performance bond issues are kind of working hand in hand. And it's just causing a lot of problems for them. So I mentioned this partially because, you know, as we're thinking about moving forward with Walnut Lane, no matter what, price surges are going to affect our project. That's just the reality of construction right now. So that's something to keep in mind as we're thinking about our partnership with IndyDwell or with anyone else. So going into the performance bond, which has been detailed a little bit more in the packet, going through the history, we agreed to do, so in our contract technically, we have an agreement that IndyDwell would provide us an irrevocable letter of credit rather than a performance bond, and that is in the amount of a million dollars. And that was just something that when we were negotiating our contract, that is just what we agreed upon, and that was approved by Joel and Lori. So just, I'm, I'm using the term performance bond, but it's technically, we're talking about an irrevocable letter of credit. But that section in the contract is for a performance bond. So on December 22nd, we executed the contract. Everybody went on holidays. IndyDwell submitted their first invoice. And we said, we need the rest of your contract documents before we can pay you. And so they sent the insurance documents the next day. And since then, we've been working with them. And I've had so many conversations, especially in the last couple of months, checking in on their progress. Because they have gotten closer to submitting building plans, the, the need for the performance bond has become a bigger issue because per our contract, the performance bond needs, the city needs to be in possession of the performance bond from the time of materials procurement through the end of the contract. So that's at the point we're at right now. So, you know, we've been working with them, both on developing building plans and also trying to make sure that we can get the bonding requirements. And now we're at a critical point because we're at the point where they need to start procuring materials. So that's kind of what leads us to this meeting today. So the last thing I want to touch on, that's, you know, kind of just an update to you, but also an issue that we are having with our contract is we're about three months delayed with IndyDwell. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone here because if we had been, you know, on schedule, you would have known sooner. But just kind of letting you know, this is the, the scheduled performance that is in our contract. And so, you know, kind of comparing where we are right now to the schedule, technically, we should have been complete with the work, but we are just now at the building plan submission process. And so in our contract, it allows us to approve extensions on the schedule. And so because of all of the challenges of this past year, we've been working with IndyDwell and kind of doing a back and forth. The city's had some delays. And so that's just, you know, where we are with some of the issues in our contract. So moving forward, these, I have these decisions. We're going to walk through Decision Tree to walk through my recommendations moving forward, kind of a few decision points that I would like, just some head nod direction from you today. So the first one is a question to you about how we proceed with IndyDwell if we want to issue a notice to cure to IndyDwell officially per our contract because we have some of these performance and cost issues? Or do we want to kind of press pause? IndyDwell has expressed to us that they think next summer, they will be able to see costs come down and they'll be able to bond. So it's a question of whether we want to press pause on this project and wait and see what happens? Or if we want to issue a notice to cure? My recommendation is that we issue that notice to cure, which would give IndyDwell 30 days per our contract. We can certainly give them more than 30 days, but 30 days is what is in our contract. And then after those 30 days, we give them time to address all of the issues that we've talked about. Two things, one of two things will happen. IndyDwell will either cure. They'll say, oh, here's our bond. We figured out our cost issues. You know, we, we've resolved all of the issues that you've listed. And we keep moving forward with IndyDwell. We'll bring you guys the final site plan and we'll keep moving forward. The other thing that could happen is IndyDwell cannot cure the, the reasons that we have listed. And so two things will then happen. This is decision two. So the city can either say, okay, you didn't mean, you weren't able to cure, but we want to keep working with you anyway. And the other option is that they don't cure, and per our contract, the contractor would go into default. And so the contract would end. So that's kind of decision point two of, you know, 30 days from now, just general direction from you. If, if they cannot cure, which direction do you want staff to take when we reach that 30-day mark? Do you want to keep working with IndyDwell? Or do you want to say, okay, that we went through that process and now the contract is over? That would be my recommendation is we give them 30 days. We've had enough conversations with IndyDwell to kind of understand what these next 30 days are going to look like. And so I think that it's, we have been working with them for six months to kind of informally cure some of these issues. And now we're at a point where we, I think formally need to have that conversation. So if we decide to, you know, the, the contract ends because they are in default because they can't cure, we have a few options moving forward. So, take a sip. Okay. So our, our contract with IndyDwell is over, but we have building plans. And so we have a few options. So the first is we can take our building plans from IndyDwell, and we can go out to bid for a new builder. And that builder can take those plans and modify them so that we can build the same duplex units that fit in with our final site plan documents that we already have. Option two is we say, okay, we're just, this was a really good experience with IndyDwell, but we are walking away from these duplexes. We either want to go back to our bidder list from the RFP in which we selected IndyDwell, and we want to solicit a different builder from that list and go through a process to sign a new contract for Phase One. Or we can also just totally do a new RFP and say, okay, this is going to be for Phase One. We want to do eight units or, you know, kind of whatever is going to fit where we've dedicated Phase One. So we kind of like revert us back to where we were about this time last year. The third option is that we can say, okay, you know, this has been, again, a really good experience, but this project has also been really complicated. And so we want to rethink the development of Walnut Lane. And we want to basically revert back to where we were a year, a year and a half ago. So those are kind of our three options. My recommendation is that we keep moving forward. We take our plans and we go out to bid. And we have, we hire a contractor to do both horizontal and vertical altogether for Phase One. We have them kind of modify, because they're modular plans. We would need that contractor basically to be able to do a design build and do some value engineering, be able to modify those plans so that they can most likely be stick-built. It's definitely also possible that we would get modular, other modular manufacturer, you know, developers, and they can modify those plans and build them and bring them on site. But I think that the best option for us to move forward is to continue with the duplexes that we have a preliminary site plan and final plan documents for, and we just find a new builder and we keep moving forward. So that's kind of the IndyDwell question that was referenced in the packet. That's kind of the, the three decisions, the guidance that I am requesting. The other thing, kind of the question too that was in the packet, is this question of time versus money. Do we pause and wait for prices to come back down, for the supply chain to kind of settle down? Or do we continue fund, continue forward and we use ARPA funding or some other funding source to fill those gaps and increase costs? Because whether we do it with IndyDwell and we keep moving forward with them, or we move forward with any other builder, even for, you know, horizontal site work, prices are just going to be higher right now. So it's this question of time versus money. Do we want to wait and see what happens? Or do we want to keep moving forward? My recommendation is that we use ARPA funding, and there are two reasons for that. I think that the first one, which this was explained a little bit in the packet, we have, we received the sales tax revenue bond, which is for $6.5 million, and that is supposed to pay for Phases One and Two. And so we have three years to spend down that bond. And, you know, Ben and I have talked to Alex. I think that because of COVID and the circumstances of this past year, it still would be possible to ask the IRS for an extension. But technically, we have three years to spend that. So if we delayed by a year, it would compress our timeline to do Phases One and Two. So, you know, if we delayed, we'd start Phase One and then pretty immediately be ramping up to do Phase Two. So it just would be a compressed timeline instead of kind of sticking to a closer timeline to what we've been talking about for the past year. The second thing is, you know, Chuck is not here. He said he was going to come. But I am going to pitch that I think that Walnut Lane is a really good fit for the ARPA funding, for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So the city's receiving a little over $600,000 in grant funding, which is allocated to all the cities throughout the state. And then those funds can also be leveraged for match funding, competitive $50 million pool of match funding. So that'll be paid in, in two tranches, one very soon and one sometime next year. There are a lot of eligible uses for ARPA funding. I know that the city is also considering sewer and water and some other infrastructure projects. But because this funding has to be used basically for, you know, addressing populations or businesses or services that were affected by COVID, I think that Walnut Lane is a really good argument for these funds. They can specifically be used for programs or services that are addressing housing insecurity, lack of affordable housing, or homelessness, specifically including the development of affordable housing to increase the supply of affordable and high-quality living units, which is the mission statement of the Walnut Lane project. That's what the council purchased the property to do. And I have a lot of records of our tenants being disproportionately impacted by COVID. More than half of our residents at Walnut Lane have received rent assistance from a local organization. And so I think that we have a really good argument, you know, just for our, our initial allocation, but also to apply for match funding. And so I think that this is a really good opportunity to keep moving forward with Walnut Lane. I know that costs are going to increase, but I think that this is, you know, kind of good news at the end of a bad news presentation. And I think also, I, I want to focus mostly on Walnut Lane. I know that this meeting was scheduled only for an hour, so I don't want to take up too much time. I know that there was some information in there about employee housing. And I think that's a huge question. It's an important conversation that we need to have. The city staff is facing a real employee challenge, particularly in the police department, but across all departments. And so I think that it's time for the city to have that conversation about, you know, what those policies look like. How do we fund them? Do we want to build? Do we want to provide stipends? What are our needs amongst our staff? I think that's a way bigger question than we have time for today. But I think that, you know, even in the context of ARPA funding, that's something that could be considered. As, you know, we have the $600,000 pot that I would like to prioritize towards Walnut Lane. But, you know, in the context of council discussing priorities for that funding, you know, I think employee housing could also fit into that. So don't want to talk too much about that today. Just give a little teaser and hopefully we can schedule a workshop or discussion about that moving forward. So yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin, for the presentation. And thanks for notifying us so quickly about what, about where you are with IndyDwell. I just want to start off by saying it's very important to me that we always stay in the black with Walnut Lane. That was something that this council was pretty specific about in going into this project, that, that we'd never be spending money outside of the, you know, the project, that the project would pay for itself. Now, we knew that we were going to have to take that $2 million and front it to secure the property and that there'd be some maintenance in between now and, and finished product. But in, in, in looking at your recommendations and just through that lens, it feels like to me that absolutely if we use the ARPA money and we match it with the state money, essentially giving us 1.2, plus the Wahoo money, you know, that, that's still available, we would most certainly be in the black moving forward with the project. And if, you know, and, and based on your recommendations too, to, you know, continue forward to cure or not to cure, but then moving forward regardless, that we just want to make sure that the pro forma is such that we're in the black.
And what's S T R B? Does the state funding?
Oh, sales tax revenue bond. So that's the...
That's the bond we did to pay for the project.
That was magic money. It's not.
It's a, it's a bond that we have to start paying on next year. So that's another consideration too.
Comments?
Caitlin, I'm just curious. So for the $216,000, what, what sort of work did we get for that?
We have not paid the $216,000.
I know, but what is, what's the bill for?
So the, the way that our, and I can pull up the contract if you guys want to look at elements of the contract. But the $216,060 is the first 20%, which was due at contract signing. So the way that our contract with IndyDwell was broken up was by percentages along, like, as they're going forward. So the next payment that, or the next invoice that they would have sent us would be 60 days prior to factory procurement, or like, you know, them sending information to the factory. So we're getting kind of close to, at this point with IndyDwell, that next payment would come sometime later in July because we right now have factory slots to build in September. But presumably that first 20%, it's not broken out, but presumably it's for, you know, schematic design work.
So if we cancel the contract, are we still obligated to pay that? This is, Lori, get ready because all the rest of the questions are coming to you.
Is this on? So we wouldn't cancel the contract. They would be in default of the contract. So it's, there is a section of the contract where we could just decide where the relationship isn't working. We would walk away. What we're looking at is potentially where they would default on the contract. And if that actually occurs, there's a section of the contract that says, if the contractor's in default, we can freeze paying any invoices. And then in that circumstance, we can withhold that payment and then use that as an offset against any money that they might owe us. So the key paragraph in the contract is 7.8, where you have termination because of the default of the contractor. In that case, there's a provision that says if the defaulter, the, the contractor defaults and we have to go, we can take over the services. If we had, we wouldn't obviously build it ourselves. We'd have to go get someone else to construct Phase One. If we go out and get someone else to do Phase One and it costs us more money, IndyDwell has to cover that additional cost. So we could withhold that invoice payment towards that, whatever the additional cost is to, to do Phase One.
Okay. And just to be super duper absolutely clear, we haven't paid IndyDwell any money yet, but there is an invoice outstanding. And in terms of products in our hands, there are these plans, but are they with us or are they still with IndyDwell?
They're with us. They're with Berry.
They are with Berry because we took them to be able to process the permit and we're all set to go.
Yeah.
Or we're, we're, we're close to getting our permit. So that's, but we have the plans. Like, we wouldn't have them if we weren't the, also the, the building department.
Right. Well, we, we actually, we, we would. So Caitlin and I had talked about this too. The legal answer to that is that the records, so there's a provision in our contract about who owns the records. And so while IndyDwell would technically own the plans that they produce, we have a, a right in perpetuity to use them for a city building, for city purposes. So they, it's like, I mean, think of it as like, it's a very broad thing, but like a copyright. They, they hold that, but we can still use them. So we, yes, we have plans that we can use and we have plans that we could give to someone else to build. They don't own, they, they can't prohibit us from doing that.
But is the invoice amount, does that invoice amount match? Sorry, Summer. Does the invoice amount match the plans provided? Like, because I'm just, the, the amount of money that, that is part of that first invoice is an estimate of the total project, right? It's not a cost of the plans delivered.
I think I know what you're saying in your answer. The answer is, it wouldn't, it, the amount that they're asking us to pay isn't like, we put 200 hours in, so pay us 200 hours. It's 20% of the contract.
Right.
So have we gotten 20% of the contract to date? That's what we, you know, Caitlin could probably tell us that.
So that's the complicated amount. Yeah.
Yeah.
And someone stop me if this is not a question I should be asking at this point because since I don't know what I can or can't ask. But if we go down the line where there's a question of us being reimbursed or paid, is there a chance that they would go into bankruptcy? And just tell me if I can't ask that, but I, it does a question out in my mind since it seems like one of the questions is, could we be in a position where we're asking to be reimbursed for something? And is it money we would ever see?
Yeah, that's a, that's, that's the question.
Like I said, yeah.
You know, just because, just because there's a contract provision that says they would have to pay us if we had to go out and it costs $600,000 more. Your question is accurate. Do they have that $600,000? And that's, I think, a valid question. I don't know.
Okay, sorry. Just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Tools I need to make a decision.
It's a good question to ask. I mean, given the article that was in the, you, you put the article...
It's in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, that, that there is a potential financial issue with them.
And so if we never paid them what they invoiced us, contract or not, and then they file bankruptcy, would the bankruptcy court come back to us for that contractual obligation?
So post-petition, pre-petition is, any debts are frozen and post-petition are potentially payable. So this would be a debt that if they filed for bankruptcy, you know, tomorrow, it's, it's pre, it would be pre-petitioned. So it's a complicated answer. You, you may see pennies on the dollar once all the bankruptcy is sorted out. I mean, that's the point of a bankruptcy.
If we pay the 200...
It gets a lot more gray than that. If we owed them $200,000 and they filed for bankruptcy, they could say to the court that we owed them that money. But obviously, if they came to us and said, you owe them this money, we would say, yeah, but because of the damages we sustained in rebidding the project and paying another provider over the top of what the original bid was, we actually have $500,000 in damages against them. They owe us $300,000. We don't owe them money. We're actually a creditor who wants to lay a claim in the bankruptcy. So it just gets, that gets real legalese real quick.
Since with this conversation jumped so quickly to legal, I'm curious of the recommendations that Caitlin just made, how you, Lori, and you, Joel and Carly feel about these recommendations moving forward. Would this be your recommendation as well?
Yes. For me.
I mean, I, I agree. I don't, it's a bad decision and a bad decision. There's just no good answer. Um, yes, this is, these are your options.
And the recommendations, that feels like the right flow. And really, we're just talking about like this company, everything would be fine had this company not found themselves in this bonding crux and the bonding crux is because of COVID.
And the inflation rate of materials, yeah. And that's the concern. If we just put it on pause and wait a year in hopes that the inflation rate for materials comes back down, there's no guarantee that'll be the case and there's no guarantee that this company will survive that year. So you put it on pause, you wait nine months and they go out of business, you're now just nine months further behind.
Well, is not one of the issues that they are closing one of their Western US factories, which is impacting their ability to deliver on time?
So we talked to them about that yesterday and they told us that the Caldwell factory did not send work to Pueblo. So I'm.
Their argument was it does not affect them. All our other information leads us to think otherwise.
And they are opening a factory in Virginia, so it's unclear.
So is the question right now, the most immediate is, do we want to do a notice to cure?
Yes.
Okay. And then in 30 days, we will be having, be asking a different question. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then just to be clear, how much is in the Wahoo funds? I thought it was only like $120,000 or something.
It should be. It should be more than that. I, I know that we've been using it for.
That's a loaded question because there's more than that in there, but we have obligated it to these contracts. So there's more in the account than that, but under this contract, it was obligated. So there's more, but there's technically zero if you count your obligations.
That's what I thought if we were, we got to that.
So, so just to get clear on that too, like, part of what Wahoo was helping us do was to pay some of the day-to-day costs at Walnut Lane, right, for existing residents. So presumably now because it'll take us longer to build something, we will need more of that money for that day-to-day stuff, right? Do we have a sense of if it all might be used? Or I, I'm just trying to, you know, think about how numbers stack up. If, if we can really count on part of that or if it might end up, I don't know how much is in there. If it might end up needing to be eaten up in the interim for, yeah.
I mean, we will still be, we're only building eight units. We're going to have ongoing maintenance costs until Walnut Lane's built out. It's a really good question about how much more. I, I haven't run those numbers about how much more over time it would be if we waited a year for the maintenance costs.
Okay. So that's like something that maybe we would ask you and Ben to come back with or something. So we had some idea. What do we really have? Yeah.
I think the greater challenge is going to be that we will still have bond payments. And so the quicker we can build out Walnut Lane, the more, the quicker we'll have units to start generating more revenue to be able to pay back those.
Because we'll be rolling the $2 million into the, the payments of the.
Right. Because, yeah, we still have the property, real property lease and the sales tax bond now that we will be paying on. So, I mean, I think in general, the sooner that we can increase the number of units at Walnut Lane, the quicker Walnut Lane will generate more revenue.
And another thing with that is we have been paying those O and M costs out of this, but they've stabilized as the, over the last year, we've had people down there working and getting everything repaired and operable. Like last year, we basically had to repair every single swamp cooler on the property and this year it was one or two. And we were doing a lot of furnaces the last couple of winters because that we've kind of got them replaced and going. And so our costs, there's still costs there, yes, but they have stabilized to a degree as compared to what they've been historically.
And the rents likely cover at least some of the maintenance.
That's a question for Ben.
According to our packet last time, I mean, we were in the, we were in the red with how much it was costing to have those units compared to what we were getting.
Yeah.
That was coming in.
Yeah, it, it will take a couple of years. I mean, we won't immediately be in the black. Once these eight units are built, we will become in the black once the project is built out. And that's partially because we're taking on a lot of debt to build out units. And so the more we can increase our density on the site, the better the revenues will be. I think it will also help once we convert to an income-based rent rather than the rents that we're charging right now.
I just had two process questions. So was this on our agenda like for a discussion? I mean, do you need more guidance from us than, you know, some kind of formal motion, I take it? It would just help me if somebody just reiterated in words so I don't get confused. Again, you know, once, once we're done here with the formal recommendation is, and then I'll be clear on, on, on what I'm agreeing to. And the second thing was just, just so I understand moving forward, because I do understand the part of the packet that talks about the importance of, you know, other employee housing and needs and maybe eventually wanting to use part of Walnut Lane for employees. Just tell me if I'm wrong, is, is it my understanding that our first obligation and promise that we've made is to use these Walnut Lane units to rehouse people who already live there, right? So anybody who might be listening and hoping that these units will become available for other people needs to understand that that all comes first and that's probably going to be more than eight units. So that's, that's a ways off, right? Okay.
And it's also imperative in the build-out process in order to remove the other trailers to keep going into their phases. We have to relocate them.
Okay, great. Just in case anyone was hoping. Yeah, okay.
And Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, I, I don't, it's not a formal motion.
Okay, yeah.
Just guidance.
Yeah, no, just, just so I'm not confused, maybe you can restate the recommendation.
I, I can go back through our little flow chart.
I may be the only one who just got a little bit lost. Yeah.
Okay, decision one.
You don't have to read them all. It was just more like, you know, at some point somebody was like, do the other staff agree?
Let's go through the flow chart and like either nod or ask questions as we move through the flow chart if that works.
Before we do that, can I clarify one alternative? So in option three, Caitlin, you said abandon the current master plan and so forth. My question for you is if we did something radically different from, less expensive for phase one, and you mentioned about, just going back to the, the other bidders on the last RFP for, for phase one, regardless of what kind of housing they bid, manufactured homes, those units would presumably fit on the same, in the same place in the development, on the same lots, more or less. If we did go with an alternative type of housing for phase one, does it still render the rest, the phase two, three and so forth, it stands alone? I mean, it would still be options to pursue. Is that right?
So if we went with a different builder for phase one, we, the short answer is I don't know because we would need, I would need to work with our civil and landscape. Like we, we would need to work with our designers of our phase one final site plan to figure out what would change. So right now we have, our, our final site plan is designed so that it's specific for these four buildings that we were bringing in. So I definitely think that we could find an alternative. We would need to pay more money to our civil and landscape to, you know, reassess and redraw those plans. So I don't know. I, the, the short answer is I haven't done a site plan analysis to figure out if we could put manufactured units or if we would want to, you know, put in townhomes or apartments or, you know, I guess that's, if, if that is an interest to the council, I can work with our team to figure out what would fit there. But I haven't done that analysis yet.
Well, we did talk about that. I remember Caitlin drafted a schematic to show how single wide trailers, if placed on the lot, would roughly be eight in line. Remember when we had this conversation and we decided not to move forward with that because of the, well, I think it was partially because of like, what do you do with a resale of a single wide? And the, that we couldn't fit eight on the same plot because in order to have the density, you have to stack. That's what it was.
I don't remember. I mean, it seemed like the setbacks for the manufactured housing was less than we thought and so maybe we could fit it a little bit more, but I'm not, I, I don't know how it fits into the master plan as it's currently drawn.
Yeah, if, if that's something of interest, I can work.
Okay, well, I'll bring it up because I mean, there's basically two options here. Either is to get additional funding from somewhere else that we didn't, ARPA in this case largely, or build something that's less expensive and try to sweep by despite its downsides of long-term equity value and so forth and quality of homes and so forth. So not something I prefer to do, but I mean, I just want to throw it out there as one way to do it. That's all.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Mike. Well, let's go back to the beginning of the decisions and just kind of go through. So notice to cure, the recommendation is yes. Do, do any council members have question or concern about yes? I certainly don't. No. So yes, it is. Okay.
Our plan is to give 30 days. Right, speak now if you.
30 days is what's specified in the contract or state law or is that a discretionary time?
It's in the contract. It, we have the ability to extend beyond 30 days, but 30 days is the minimum.
So we're, so we're pretty much putting the football in your, in your court. Nope, that's not the right ball. The ball is in your court, the basketball, whichever ball goes in a court. So you're going to be dealing, you would be dealing with the, with IndyDwell with this notice to cure?
Yeah. So what I would do is I would, I can draft the document. What I'll get from Caitlin are the specific items because I think there, we need to be very clear as to what they need to cure, be very specific about it. So I understand that obviously the bonding is one and, you know, performance within the contract sum is another. And then I think there are some other deadlines that are coming up that we need to make sure that they meet or some deadlines perhaps that they haven't met that we need. So we need, essentially we need to put in it everything they need to do. And then because one of the decisions is in 30 days, if they've done some of the things, but not all of the things, we're at that other decision point. But we need to be clear, it's sort of, what we'd like to do is a speak now or forever hold your peace with everything that we, as, as per the contract that they haven't done. I don't want to leave anything out.
Okay. And then with that as well, we're not paying them, we're not making, we're not paying them that invoiced amount.
Right. I would, I mean, I would argue that we are, once we send that letter, that under our contract, we can freeze the invoices.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I was just curious, I mean, has IndyDwell commented on the fact that they, is it skyrocketing commodity prices is why they feel they can't bond? I mean, or?
We have gone through, I think, three different attempts of them trying to establish a performance bond. They have expressed to us that they have not done a performance bond like this before. And so I think because, even though IndyDwell's been around for longer, because the Pueblo factory is newer, they are struggling to find investors that will provide that bond.
Yeah. And I think the way they had put it, if you, they said that essentially they're a startup and they're having issues showing that they have the books to justify someone giving them the bond. And so I think there's a lot, there are a lot of factors, but I think one of them is, is that they're in some sense lacking a bigger track record to show that they're, that they would be good for the bond. One of the things they have kept telling us is that their surety keeps asking for additional documentation and they keep providing it and they keep being told it's not sufficient. And so I don't know, I mean, I can speculate what that means is that the surety is, keeps looking for something, enough information to justify basically, you know, loaning them a million dollars. And so I think.
But where, I, I, not to interrupt, but I, I think where businesses might have a year ago or even two years ago been readily able to get bonds now because of post-COVID, the bonding, I know for sure that between bonding and insurance, companies have way pulled back. So I don't know. The question was like, is it because of COVID? Maybe not directly, but it might definitely be indirectly if they're not able to secure the.
Yeah, I want to be careful.
Bonding and insurance. I don't know.
One of the reasons they gave us is because they're a startup and they don't have the books yet. And, and so I think there's a lot of factors that go into that, but that's one of the factors they gave us was that they just don't have the books to justify the, the sure, to prove to the surety that they're, that they should get the bond. So.
So Caitlin, I keep reading about inflation is raising, it's ugly. Had interest rates are climbing or will climb or expected to climb. So would I be correct in assuming that if we have to borrow any new money or the existing terms of the loan have to be renegotiated? Our lending cost will be higher presumably than we've enjoyed so far. Is that correct?
Do you mean for our, the debt that we're taking on to build this project?
Yeah, for anything, I mean, if, whatever path we end up choosing here, if we ever have to borrow any more money, then presumably it'll, it's going to be more expensive. I'm guessing all because interest rates are climbing. They've been low.
Presumably, but we received the sales tax revenue bond with the plan that it would pay for phases one and two. So the plan has always been in, you know, three years, we would go out and get a construction loan for phase three. So at some point, yes, we will have to go out and get a lender to give us a, a different type of loan to build out phase three. But that's not going to be for a few years. So I, I, at this one, I'm not worried about kind of interest rate changes. I'm not, I, I think it's too early to start tracking that for our construction loan later on.
Can staff provide the council with a detailed description of our Wahoo fund balance and where it's, where money has been allocated for payment? Because I'm sure it's allocated to pay our, our annual payment to Zion's for the $2 million. The $2 million acquisition. So, well, and you don't have to answer now because actually it's almost five o'clock anyway. But I mean, unless you have.
I can provide guidance on that via email.
That could be helpful. So we just basically want to know, because Karen's question was how much money do we have in there? So like, how much, like cash do we have? Do we have any other cash coming in? Was there cash we thought was going to be in there, but it's not because of a discrepancy with a hotel? And then where, what is, what have we allocated of that fund to pay? Whether or not it's been paid or is going to be paid.
Yeah, but I thought like the bulk of the funds from Wahoo went to the purchase of the piece of property?
No.
No, no. Wahoo wasn't in place at the time of purchase. Wahoo, we passed Wahoo.
We have a real property lease with Science Bank.
Yeah.
The, the funds that are in Wahoo are just obligated to these contract, this IndyDwell contract.
So like 1.6 for the first, is, is that, am I right on that number for the first eight units?
Yep.
And is that just, I'm sorry, if, I mean, there's a lot of information in this project.
Yeah.
The infrastructure cost for the sewer and water and electricity, like is that part of?
The, the 1.6 in the budget that you guys have seen is inclusive of all of the infrastructure. So it's 1.6 for horizontal and vertical. If the vertical goes up to 1.4, then the total project for phase one is going to go up to $2 million, just as an example. So does that make sense?
No, try that again.
Okay. So the, the economic pro forma that you guys have seen shows that phase one is going to cost 1.6.
Yes.
Our contract with IndyDwell is for about a million.
Okay.
So far, and, and then we have about $600,000 in infrastructure, breaking down that 1.6.
Chuck is here if you want to kick in infrastructure question. But keep going.
So if our vertical increases from a million to a million four, then total project would increase by that.
And as far as anticipation into Wahoo, there's two, still two outstanding projects that could permit and end up paying into Wahoo? And as far as anticipation into Wahoo, there's two, still two outstanding projects that could permit and end up paying into Wahoo?
Yeah, so that's what I mean by the bigger, the bigger Wahoo picture of money.
Yes, and just going back, so we still have the Wahoo, we're paying maintenance costs, we're still spending the Wahoo, but the sales tax, 6.5, was to cover the cost, like not using Wahoo, so when.
And for Doug, should we just remind Doug of maybe Caitlin, since you're the one that came up with that fantastic acronym that Wahoo stands for?
Workforce Affordable Housing Opportunity. I forget, I'm sorry.
Offense?
I wrote my eyes.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, yes.
I think the extra O was just for the turn on her to make it look.
Otherwise it's Wahoo.
I think it's ordinance. I think the mayor is right.
Yeah. But it's basically the fund that hotels, that, that, the, the, the money that's been, uh, somebody else do it. Because I, I don't want to say it's a, it's not a, hmm, it's a.
It's an assured, it's an assured workforce.
It's not an impetus.
Well, yeah, so it's the Assured Workforce Housing Ordinance, that's how it's codified. And essentially, it requires any new overnight accommodations with either to dissipate the impact of their employees on the community, they either need to build a certain amount of housing for the employees, there's calculations in the ordinance, or they can pay a fee in lieu of construction if they decide they don't want to build the housing themselves. The fee is basically the Assured Workforce Housing Fee, but we've named it after a fish because Caitlin wanted to.
Thank you, but I, that's, I think that's just, it's really smart for us to remind the paper what we're talking about in terms of this chunk of money that we have.
Okay, just to wrap up your question though, so when we talked about the sales tax revenue bond, we did it for 6.5 because that's what it was budgeted for to cover phase one and phase two. And, you know, Chuck added, just as an example for the water bond, which passed at the same time, Chuck added a little bit of margin for, you know, because we anticipated costs to increase. For this project, we did not because we didn't want to take on that additional debt. And so we said we will use the Wahoo to pad, you know, those cost increases. But right now, we're not relying on the pad. We are relying on the sales tax revenue bond. And I think that the ARPA funding is a unique opportunity to not spend the Wahoo and instead spend this pot of money for people that have been directly affected by COVID that live at Walnut Lane.
Yeah, okay, so to that point though, if we use ARPA funding and to go back to property tax, Ben, so we were talking 2 million mark in order to match ARPA funding. If we're using different funding, do we not have to hit that 2 million mark for property tax?
That's definitely a complicated question. The $50 million that's available under ARPA is, can be used from any revenue source. It's not just from the original 600,000 issuance. So we can use any money that we have on hand as match money for that, for any grants that we apply for.
And ARPA is one time, whereas sales, uh, property tax is ongoing.
But we can get both.
Right, but one of the arguments to go, to hit that 2 million, 2 million mark was so that we could match ARPA funding. And so if we're going to use it all in this one go, then that is, just, he hits that argument.
It seems they're confusing the two parts.
Yeah. Yeah, we get 600, period. We can match the 600 with an extra 600, but what you just said, what I understand, you just saying is we don't have to match our six, we can match, the grant program is matched with any funding.
Yeah, 600 just we walk away with it. The grant, we can use any money to match that, we don't have to use that.
But we think the grant would, would definitely, we would score well if it's a housing program and if we went for the 600 to match the 600 of ours, if we spent it for the ARPA, or we match it with.
Ben, are you comfortable talking about some of the restrictions on ARPA yet?
I'm, I'm very comfortable at this point.
Will you talk about that just a little bit?
So in the last meeting that we had discussing property tax.
Microphone, just, do you want a chair?
Nora, will you?
I'd love a chair.
I'll get comfortable.
Yeah.
So in the last meeting, we talked about possible uses of ARPA fun, or sorry, property tax funding. And one of that, one of those things was to match ARPA funds. So as we dug more into ARPA funding and what eligible projects are, the guidance is actually very, very specific. I had glossed over infrastructure and as you actually read the code, it is limited to water, sewer or broadband. And then the other one, the other relevant project would be a housing project. So essentially, we are limited in the city of Moab to one of those four things. There are other things available, but essentially for our needs, that's, that's where we're at. There, yeah, that's.
But as, as specific as it is, I mean, water, I mean, we've been told for years and years is one of our biggest, you know, issues and the infrastructure for that. So as specific, we have a broad use for that allocation of money.
And I think, you know, Chuck's here as well. He would say that we have a couple shovel ready projects that would be ready to go on the sewer side. And so there, there are things in line that, that it could be used for. I had presented previously and said that could be a roads project and that was incorrect. So it would be water, sewer or housing.
And I think it would be hard for staff to say of water, sewer and housing, which one's the larger crisis? I think it's fair to, I think it's fair to say they're all a crisis.
So the current water projects would not be eligible, like the well and storage tank?
I think we're deviating, actually, I'm going to stop us right here because it does feel like we're deviating from the conversation that is agendaed for the Walnut Lane. And this is a good conversation and I want to have it. I just want to have it as an agenda item for our next city council meeting. I think that, because we're, we're going to, this is super important, but it's going to take us down a, a conversation path that is beyond the scope of Walnut Lane. So reeling us back in and you have the answer from the council of how to move. We're going to wait to hear back, but let's go ahead and put Walnut Lane on our agenda for our next city council meeting so that it's there if we, if we do hear back from Indy dwell. If it's not, then we just, we'll skip over it until our next meeting. But we might hear back by them and have some action items to talk about.
We will place it on the next agenda that works for you guys, just as a council report. And we'll just present where we're at with it. They'll have the 30 days and unless they terminate the contract, there won't be any change as far as the legality of it, so we'll put it on.
Let's go ahead and put it as an agenda item though.
You want it as an agenda item?
I think so, yeah, because if it's, because then it's on the agenda if it's more than an update.
Okay.
And if it's just an update, it's an update and we'll move through it.
Perfect.
So it's definitely put in an agenda item, but definitely, Ben, we'll be looking for information from you about the Wahoo money. And did you need anything else from this council in terms of?
Just to be clear, so the only decision ahead nod is we're going to issue the notice. And then we will make decisions two and three after 30 days.
Mm-hmm. I think that's clear.
Okay.
Ronnie, you have a question?
So will it be part of the next Walnut Lane discussion or is it a separate discussion? I would just like a little, a little follow-up discussion on ARPA and opportunity costs. You know, having to choose to use it for one thing versus another at some point. So would that be part of the Walnut Lane one or separate, separate one at a future meeting?
It's own agenda item for the next meeting as well. In fact, we might want to even consider doing like a ARPA workshop prior to, to the next meeting. I think that would be almost better because they're going to, they, they really are going to need to hear from us what, how we want to move forward with the ARPA money. So I don't know that we need an agenda summary for that workshop other than maybe some boxing gloves between departments to see who wins the award. No, I'm just kidding. We'll hug it out. But let's do that as a workshop at our next meeting. Let's plan on that. Does that sound good? So we can have that conversation. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Anything else for Walnut Lane? Any other burning questions? Okay, goodbye.
Thanks.
And we will move on to our second agenda item. Toni?
Uh, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I am recusing myself and leaving. You can adjourn without me.
See you later, alligator. So proposed ordinance 2021-13 in ordinance amending the text of the Moab Municipal Code MMC to add regulation for outdoor dining by amending section 17.21 C2 Commercial Residential Zone, 17.24 C3 Central Commercial Zone, 17.27 C4 General Commercial Zone and 17.31 RC Resort Commercial Zone and by allowing consideration of parklets in the city right of way by amending section 17.24 C3 Central Commercial Zone. Associated definitions will be added to MMC section 17.06 definitions. That way for the agenda, for the record, it's written in and you don't have to read that big chunk for a motion.
Just, just a quick question. When you do want a motion, because the red line includes, includes additional zones that weren't in what you just read, I think the industrial zone and the C5. So do you want us when we, if and when someone makes a motion to that included?
It's not in there, is it? Yep, okay, yeah, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll try. Are you aware of anything other than that that needs to be added?
I did, all of them are added in the title. So the neighborhood commercial zone, I just didn't put C5 there, but it's in the title.
Um, it's in the red line, but I think not, it wasn't on the agenda that the mayor just read from, I think.
I read from the.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Okay, well, I can try it. No, no, because.
Sorry.
No, 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 I just didn't know what I, okay, so I guess I'll, I'll move to approve ordinance 2021-13 and ordinance amending the text of the Moab Municipal Code to add regulation for outdoor dining by amending sections 17 dot 21, the C2 Commercial Residential Zone, 17 dot 24, the C3 Central Commercial Zone, 17 dot 27, the C4 General Commercial Zone, 17 dot 30, the Neighborhood Commercial Zone, 17 dot 31, the RC Resort Commercial Zone and 17 dot 36, the Iwan Industrial Zone to allow consideration of parklets in the city right of way. Oh, wait, did I miss an and?
Keep going.
Okay, anyway, I guess I get maybe and to allow whatever consideration of parklets in the city right of way by amending section 17 dot 24 C3 Central Commercial Zone, period. Associated definitions will be added to Moab Municipal Code section 17 dot 06 definitions.
Thank you for that motion.
Ah, yeah.
Very, very grateful. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Thank you, staff, for, and Nora for pulling it all together, yeah.
Caitlin was helpful.
Thanks, Caitlin. Uh, any, anything else? Good work. I'll call for the, for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes 4-0.
Thanks, everybody.
And we're done. Thanks, Nora. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Caitlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Oh, did we need to have Toni back for that?
No.
I forgot.